Patricia Carlin, and I'll spell my name. P A T R Y C J A K A R L I N. And I am from the Carlin Law Firm LLC. I am along with the Disparti Law Group representing our clients in this case. So, thank you for your presence today. We are here to address allegations of a deeply disturbing nature. For over five years, our clients, students at a Chicago public schools, endured grooming and sexual abuse by a teacher, a person entrusted with their education and safety. Regrettably, this occurred under the indifferent oversight of the Chicago Public School System. The impact of these traumatic events on our clients is profound and long-lasting. It is crucial to recognize that this isn't an isolated incident. The Chicago Public School System has a history of similar cases, a fact extensively reported, including the 2018 Chicago Tribune investigation. Together with the Disparti Law Group, we are committed to seeking justice and accountability at the highest level. We stand firmly in our resolve that such grievous misconduct cannot continue. In fact, it must stop right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Attorney Larry Disparti. Thank you all for being here today. The well-being and safety of our children are the foundations of our society. Yet, the Chicago Board of Education, Federico Garcia Lorca Elementary School, and the Chicago Public School District 299 have failed to act in protecting three minor children from the clutches of a teacher whose sexual misconduct was so shocking and pervasive. As a father, we as parents need to demand better. Our schools need to do better. Unfortunately, that's not what's happening in our schools today. In fact, the public school system has more than 30 individuals to deal with allegations like the one in this particular case. Last year alone, there were 448 sexual allegation cases opened by CPS. This is not acceptable. We deserve better, and our children deserve better. In a few minutes, our attorneys are going to outline a case with details that are so repulsive, and the mandated reporter administrators and the staff have turned a blind eye. This is not acceptable. We are fighting this case very aggressively, and it's going to take everything we have to hold the schools accountable, to protect our children. It is a fight that is just and it's right as a society. If there are other families, we welcome them to come forward as well and speak with us. At this point, I'd like to turn things over to Bob Fioretti.
Here it is, 161.37-page complaint outlining the heinous and disturbing crimes of not only a teacher, but a school system that has victimized three young children, too young to even list their names on this complaint. Our schools are meant to be sanctuaries of learning, growth, and support for our children. But this lawsuit sheds light on a dark and distressing reality, the presence of sexual misconduct in a place that should be one of our safest for our children, our schools. The outlined crimes are so disturbing that they jeopardize the future of the young minds of our young people who roam the halls of our schools. We shouldn't be here today. We shouldn't be standing in this room with a complaint about a teacher who victimized children. We shouldn't be counting the ways that a school system ignored the signs and abuse and enabled a predator to groom 10, 11, and 12-year-old boys. We shouldn't have a school system that has more staff investigating sexual crimes and abuses than the number of students in the average classroom. But we are, and it's heartbreaking. The young boys in this case were vulnerable and impressionable, and now face profound emotional and psychological consequences which will last a lifetime. The scars left by such experiences hinder academic achievement and progress, personal development, relationships, and trust in authority. The accusations in this case are sickening and difficult to read, but it's essential that they be made public. The defendants failed to protect the most vulnerable members of our society and cannot be left to victimize anyone else anytime from this point on. Our resources of these people that are before you and our resolve are great. We are committed to seek justice for these young kids. Now, I'd like to introduce Cass Casper as part of this legal team, who will update you as to where this case is. Cass?
Thank you very much, Bob, Larry, and Patricia. My name is Cass Thomas Casper. I'm an attorney. Yesterday, Disparti Law Group entered its appearances on behalf of the plaintiffs, the children in this case, and is our intent to seek justice for these young people from the depredations of the defendant and the failure to protect the Chicago Public Schools engaged in. As Bob, as Larry, and Patricia have all pointed out, the allegations in this lawsuit are an outrage. Parents should read this lawsuit. We urge you to read this lawsuit, every paragraph, although it is long, because you need to be aware of what Chicago Public Schools failed to do in this case. As alleged in the complaint, the defendant teacher was in a position of trust. He engaged in a long campaign of grooming of these young minor children. He earned their trust. He earned the trust of the family, and he took advantage of that trust. Chicago Public Schools, as outlined in the complaint, the administrators of the elementary school had multiple occasions and multiple signs that he was engaging in this kind of conduct and did nothing to stop it until the harm was exacted on these children. So, we urge parents to read the complaint, and we urge Chicago Public Schools to do better. As stated, the case is now in court. The Chicago Board has filed an appearance. They're asking to stay the litigation pending the outcome of the criminal case for the defendant. We are going to fight to oppose that stay because the children in this case need justice. They need justice quickly, and we are determined to get it for them and to hold the Chicago Public Schools accountable. With that, I'll turn it over back over to Bob Fioretti for questions.
Any questions?
Bob, you allege in the lawsuit there's a pattern of the CPS looking the other way at cases like this. How do you establish that pattern? How many other cases might you?
Well, I think we have certain numbers right here. First of all, the sexual abuse unit was opened in 2018 because of the Tribune articles. At that time, hired 30 investigators. At the end of 2018, going into 2019, they dropped off for a while, and then they're back to 30 right now. As of September of this year, 225 active investigations are going on. This unit has followed 135 sustained sexual misconduct so far. I say this because prior to that time, the problem that CPS had, they were not only somewhat investigating cases, but they were also defending the board on liability. And I've heard it in the past from other people, and they, you know, this, we need to get this out, what the information is, but it's almost a custom and practice of what CPS has been doing to cover this up. Let's face facts. CPS, our school system, is in utter disarray. Nobody can say, "Oh, it's a shining light." What do we have? One out of every four students can read? One out of every, what is it, four or five that may be able, as they graduate on math? The numbers are horrendous. And so, this government, City Hall, and what happens at CPS, everybody ignores what's happening over there.
I just wanted to clarify, the 135 cases substantial, was that this year?
No, not over a period of time, right now.
Since 2018?
So, what?
Since Seattle was open, since 2018?
Yes, yes. And 30 investigators, sometimes not enough, obviously, on the numbers that are there. And this pattern goes back quite a long time.
Who was it? Who could best summarize what you're talking about? We've heard the term grooming, and perhaps without getting into too graphic detail, but what is alleged here? There was interaction at school, interaction out of school. Can you kind of summarize what's alleged in the complaint?
Well, a couple of things on that. These are, the parents are Hispanic. The young boys were all born here. The father saw them and went to the parents, offered them all kinds of weekend stays, opportunities, fixing their houses, a whole host of items on what he did. And then, of course, as usual with these type of predators, they say, "Don't tell anybody. Don't tell anybody." You know, if it wasn't for the young boy who started self-mutilating himself, this would never have come to light. I'll tell you a story dating way back on how psychologically folks are affected. Way back in the 90s, 1990s, I had a 40-plus-year-old come to see me who was sexually abused in the other school system, the Catholic school system. All those years, it affected him. And what happened was, we were going to begin the research. As many of you know, statute of limitations were only two years or whatever at that point across the country. We did the research. We were going to have him in, couldn't contact him, had problems. Finally, his wife, who answered the phone, told us he committed suicide. And my belief, it was over this, over what happened to him in a school system. I have seen it, you know, I'm vice chair of the Anti-Human Trafficking Committee, and many of you know, I was involved in bringing to light the whole issue of human trafficking here in this city. And we see this kind of things that, you know, people just slough off, but they're all psychologically, it may not hit them today, but many years later, the Catholic Church has settled another case after years of this individual coming forward.
Bob, two things. Talk about how Mr. Castro initiated himself with the parents who did not speak English, and also talk about the CPS, Board of Educate, all of the other defendants named in this, and what their knowledge was in this.
Well, I think the complaint sort of lists a whole host of items. Cass, you?
Sure, sure. I'm prepared to address that.
Yeah.
Sure. So, what we believe happened in this lawsuit is that the physical education teacher for these three small children, we believe that the evidence is going to show he became aware that this was an underprivileged family, a family who cannot necessarily speak English well, a family that is in need, and he took advantage of that. He took advantage of that by developing a relationship with the children, where he would start texting them, buying them gifts. And again, this started in 2018 and continued all the way through 2021, 2022. He would take them out to the bowling alley. He would take them out to movies. He would buy them gifts. He introduced himself to the family of these children and gained their trust by offering to do work, for example, on the family's house. And he billed himself as like a friend of the family. And again, this is their PE teacher of these three children. He would give the kids rides back and forth where they needed it, and then ultimately, he gained their trust enough to start having the kids over to his home, to his apartment. And that is where the sexual abuse ultimately occurred. And it's outlined in the complaint in great detail. He would play games with the children where he would require them to remove their clothes, for example, if they lost. And ultimately, as outlined in the complaint, he raped one of these children on three occasions. And the allegations are also short of rape. He would do things with his body and their bodies, and it's just, it's an outrage, what's alleged in the complaint, in that front. In fact, it's hard to talk about. But here's what the message we really want to send. Why was this PE teacher put in a position to begin with where he could set children up to fall for it, so to speak? Why didn't anybody at this school see the signs that this was happening? And we believe they did see the signs. They saw it in 2018 and 2019 and 2020, where they saw the defendant out with these children. They became aware of it when, as we allege in the complaint, when there were three other complaints raised by other children against this PE teacher. And again, the school district didn't warn the parents. They didn't do anything to tell the parents that he was a threat, and as a result of that, the parents assumed that it was okay for the children to continue, you know, meeting with this individual. So, one of the objectives we hope to accomplish with this suit is to alert parents that this kind of grooming behavior that defendant Castro engaged in is something that has to be at the forefront of their minds when they entrust children to the school. If you see a parent who is engaging in texting behavior with your child, who is taking your child out to social gatherings, who is inviting, you know, your children over to their house, this is a sign that grooming is occurring. And CPS is not doing enough to warn parents that this is inappropriate conduct. The grooming behavior that I just outlined is unacceptable, and the school district needs to do more to warn parents. If school staff are engaging in this behavior as to your students, you need to alert us. You need to alert the school district that this is happening. At the same time, the school district, we believe they need to update their policies, update the education that they give to parents about what the signs of grooming are. And again, this is a dialogue that we hope to engage in with the community as this case goes forward, and that's one of our objectives here.
Who wants to address the particular vulnerability of these families and of these children with the language barriers? Who wants to address why perhaps they were particularly vulnerable with the alleged behavior particularly?
So, I think that's a question that we have to hold off on today because we have an active suit, and we have minors in the suit, and we don't want to do anything to expose them further. But what I would say is, one of the concerns we have about this is that the defendant teacher was able to spot a particularly vulnerable set of minors based upon the language barrier, based upon the nationality of the parents, and he was able to exploit fears of the family like that to ingratiate himself further, to be able to earn their trust, that he was someone in the community they can trust, maybe where they don't feel otherwise welcome, and it enabled him to take advantage of this family because of those fears in the family. So, one thing that we do believe needs to happen here is there also needs to be a focus on particularly vulnerable families in the community who may be at extra, at heightened risk for the kinds of conduct that the defendant engaged in here. And Chicago Board needs to do more to target those families, the heightened vulnerable families, to make them aware that this is a risk, this is something they need to come forward with and report if they see it happening, and those are things we want to accomplish with this suit.
No one has said it specifically. Sorry, Charlie. I didn't want to assume. The defendant, is he Spanish speaker? He's not. He's not a Spanish speaker. He's not Spanish.
And one other thing, the families came here really for, to find the American dream. Talking with the parents, they're hardworking, they believe in the American dream, but it's been shattered for all of them on what happened to their kids. And it's deadly in terms of, and the impact on them is, you know, they are disturbed themselves.
We touched upon policy. Should there be a change in policy? Instead of, even allegations made, the person's removed from the classroom kind of scenario, zero tolerance policy when there is a red flag that goes up? Should that person come out of policy?
Absolutely. That, and of course, we know a lot of people can make allegations, but there has to be some substance behind it, but they should be removed from the teaching classroom. Absolutely.
I'm just reminded of what the archdiocese says.
On the what?
On what the archdiocese says.
Absolutely. Just like the archdiocese does. And of course, they send out a letter to all the parishes that that individual has been involved in, and they react accordingly. So, and then they send them out to all their parishioners.
Cass, maybe you can address this, because you mentioned that there were signs, school staff saw defendant with these children, and it did impact. Do you know, if you have any information, if at any point, anyone at the school reported this up to the Inspector General's office or to the Office of Title IX and Student Protections, and whether any previous complaints were investigated?
We do know that four complaints were raised with the school about this individual.
The school building, the staff?
The school building, and the Chicago Board did start an investigation, and that's something that we're going to be exploring further, is what was the extent of the notice that the school received, and what action did they take immediately on gaining that notice to prevent this kind of thing from happening? Because we would note that in the complaint, we allege that in May 2021, there was an email that the school, the elementary school, issued to parents, warning them that there'd been, you know, a complaint against one of the school employees. Yet, despite that email being sent to warn folks, they didn't do enough to identify the specific teacher who was posing the threat, and the parents in this case allowed the kids to continue interacting with him, and that should have all been stopped. So, the issue about the extent of the notice of these issues is going to be an issue in the suit, and we're going to investigate that issue hard.
Can you go through those complaints? Those complaints that you're talking about, and the district found out there was some type of investigation, was that the case you're talking about in 2021? Were there others?
To the extent that we know now, the school district was aware, at least as of May 2021, that there had been multiple allegations of child sexual abuse made against this teacher. And despite that, they were aware of that, they didn't do enough to warn the parents that this individual was a threat, the parents didn't have reason to believe that he was a threat, and the abuse continued as to these plaintiffs after that May 21 notice went out. That is a failure in the notification system to parents about threats posed by employees such as this as to their children.
And do you, I think you mentioned earlier, there were times, maybe 2018, 2019, that school staff saw this defendant with children. Do you know all of those times, they reported it up to the Inspector General's office?
That's, we have alleged in the complaint that there were multiple occasions where other staff members at the school saw the defendant with these children, saw the defendant engaging in grooming behavior as to these children, including taking them out socially, taking them to the mall, taking them to the movie theater. We allege that other staff members at this elementary school saw that. And the extent to which those staff members gave notice, did something to investigate, is something that is going to be an issue in this suit and that we're going to take a long, hard look at in the discovery process. So, that is an issue that is going to be looked at in the suit.
And I just wanted to clarify, are there four complaints about this individual? Were any of them filed on behalf of your boss?
At this time, the parents didn't have sufficient notice that this individual presented a threat to raise an issue. So, they were not.
So, these were four additional?
Four additional complaints as, four additional complaints as to other children.
Do you have, I know that there was a sighting in the case of Plaza, I think it was the Harlem Plaza. Was it several movie theaters? Or was it one in particular movie theater where you know that they were seen?
We're exploring that issue further in the discovery process. I'm going to turn this back over to Bob.
Yeah. A lot of, there, a lot of what you see in the complaint is accurate, but it will then come out during the course of our own discovery. But, as was mentioned earlier and anticipated, the CPS filed a motion to stay everything pending the criminal matter, but it's typical. What will that do? We need to get to the bottom of things right now and make sure that whatever's happening in this school especially is stopped, and people are alerted.
What can you tell us about the young men, the teenagers? Are they out of the district, or are they still affected? Did they move away?
No, they all live here. They all live here. And they are going through a system, and we are beginning to assist them right now. And of course, Chicago Children's Advocacy, which is a center of dealing with abused children, had them in their, I'll say, records.
So, they're visiting services?
Yeah.
And they are all teenagers?
And they're what?
They are all teenagers?
Still, yes, yes. Anything else?
I wanted, Cass or Bob, you can give us what all is being asked for in this particular complaint. And I noticed that this was filed at the end of October. Why are we having a press conference now? Is it because of the state law?
Well, I think primarily because Patricia came to us, talked to us, we filed our appearances, or we're beginning to finish our appearances. We started yesterday in this case. You know what happens when a soul, and it's one heck of a complaint, that's for sure. It made me sick when I was reading it. And, but, you know, they could have bulldozed over. That's why we have a team that's willing to work on this, get the word out, and stop this kind of abuses in our, through our system here.
And what all is it being asked for in this?
Well, obviously, we want to help these three young men and their families in the future. You know, money doesn't make up for what happened to them. We have to stop the abuses in the system. We hope by bringing this to light now and in future conferences as we go along with this complaint, that people are aware, we raise the level of understanding, and we stop this in our system here. And again, like I said before, we have, it's almost like the school system is a stepchild. Nobody really cares. I mean, really. When you see one out of four, one out of five can read up to that level, I mean, it's really disgusting. And so, we have to stop this kind of abuse. We want to see what we can do for the kids out there.
Can I jump in there, Bob, real quick? To your question as to why we're doing this now, our colleague Patricia filed a hard-hitting, monumental complaint on this. What shocked us when we saw that, and when she came to this firm with this complaint, was why is no one reporting on this? This is a blockbuster complaint, and it should be reported on. Parents should be aware of the allegations in this complaint. That is why we're doing a press conference now. That's why we're here today, to raise awareness in the community that this happened, so that the Chicago Board has sent the message by parents that the community can't stand for this. And what do we want? We want justice for these three children who were abused and victimized by the Chicago Board's failure to enact policies that spotted this kind of grooming. That is why we're here. That's the justice we're going to get for these three kids.
And just to clarify, so we're talking about three children, but it's two families, and two of the kids are related?
Yes.
And what are the grounds of this federal lawsuit? Is it civil rights?
This is a civil rights lawsuit. We have a claim under Title IX, which is supposed to prevent discrimination in schools, and it's one of the federal statutes that is utilized to hold schools to account for sex abuse allegations like this. So, we've got a Title IX federal claim. We also have a due process claim under the United States Constitution, and we have a bevy of state law claims such as negligent hiring of this individual, negligent supervision of this individual, intentional infliction of emotional distress by this individual on these kids, negligent infliction of emotional distress, and frankly, we believe there are other claims, and we're continuing to investigate other claims, and we're going to other claims, and we're continuing to investigate other claims, and we're going to bring them and add them to this suit as discovery unfolds and this case progresses.
Do you believe that there was negligence in hiring because he had a history that was not adequate to be investigated?
Well, our discovery will uncover all that.
That's something, yeah. Thank you.
Do you think you will hear from your colleagues?
The hope is that here at Despardi Law Group and with Patricia, other victims of this kind of abuse come forward, because we want to hear from them. In the coming days, we are going to open a hotline here for sexual abuse victims, and this is going to be an area that we are going to get into, because this is an area, as, as we've seen from the allegations in the suit, it needs lawyers to get involved in this area to protect kids. If the school district's not going to do it, lawyers need to do it. And I wish it weren't that way, but it is, and until it gets fixed and this kind of thing stops happening, here at Despardi Law Group with Patricia, other lawyers, we're going to fight to make sure it's fixed and it stops happening.
So the hotline is going to be for other, other complaints regarding CPS, or other, could it be other school districts?
Other school districts. If you believe that, that's, it's going to be a general hotline. If you believe that you've been a victim of sexual abuse by a teacher, by an employee of a school, call us, we're going to, we're going to hear what you got to say. And if there's a claim to be brought, you know what? I don't think there's enough lawyers in this town bringing these kind of claims, which I've done a deep dive into the law in this area now. It doesn't appear to me there are. We're going to fix that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.